Meeting's open, little late, but it's six twenty-two for our budget meeting. Of course, I'd like to start off with, we're gonna give fifteen minutes, up to fifteen minutes, for each department head to present what they have, and if it takes longer, then the council council wants longer questions. I'd like to start off with Gary Murray, because he's got about seventy-five mile to drive to get home this season. Gary, you've got five minutes, crazy, and I understand why, but the things that we wanted to do, and of course, you know, under the first reading, we had to have a budget prepared for June to present. And since then, June has had her meeting with DLGF, and they've informed us that we're, they'd like for us to cut one point one million dollars. So what I'd like to do first is go through the larger items, and explain why the amount is there, and what exactly the cause in the council decide how they want to proceed.
Well, the two largest items, one is this poor vehicle. For the two years of proximity that I've been here, I've been using my own personal vehicles for work, which is going out on Lincoln Street almost every angle I may tell you, ready next year. And I've just put in a budget number four, purchasing a vehicle to use for city purposes. It doesn't necessarily have to be that value, but I looked up what a four-wheel drive pickup truck might be. It's like a new construction inspection also. Again, you know, it could be used by the street department if something broke down, and maybe to put plow or something like that, or pluck it right in it. It just kind of makes sense that it could work for more departments, if it was that type of vehicle.
Okay, well, there was one in the street department budget, but it was that?
No, I don't think so.
There might be smoking. They might be out on the back, do you need them?
Smoking?
Could be.
Maybe.
Just be careful, Donna.
I think the street department still has one in their budget.
No, they had, on line four forty, they had new pickup on zero zero nine, new pickup twenty-seven thousand five hundred, that was in two thousand eleven. Did they get that truck? I didn't think we did.
Did you?
Huh? Did you? I thought you had them.
Well, that's the negative, because it's not going to be a question this year. Would it be that truck, are we looking to still buy that truck later this year?
We could log that down.
That's why I was asking.
But that's, that's the reason for that being, being my budget, was one thing to use. But if there happened to be a problem with one of theirs, it would be a vehicle that they could go over there and for, while that was being repaired or something, I would find it, use my own personal vehicle.
I just seen that line item on their budget when it wasn't in two thousand twelve, or the word of the study, and this year's, so I was thinking maybe two.
Sorry, you mentioned, that, that was the one major line item. I did put in for summer intern, we could scratch that, that's not a big issue, I don't have to have summer intern. And then the engineer's salary, we decided that it was sixty-six percent paid by utilities this year, but we do that to fifty-fifty for utilities in the city, which is why your salary isn't that high.
So why are we doing that?
To take any unnecessary burden off utilities. They're just, they just aren't getting by, having reserve funds where it needs to be. And if you figure everything out, these, here, well, there you tell, what percent is worth to do for utilities in the city?
I mean, it's, I'm definitely not two-thirds of my top priority for utilities, but definitely not two-thirds. Prior, the city was picking up a third. It's, it's more of a fifty-fifty type, kind of expenditure. Now, you know, you tax this one, but it helped out the utilities by fourteen thousand or something like that.
Fourteen thousand, I think it is.
But that's not half, is that right? Now, you said that you...
If this is approved, it'll be fifty-fifty.
There would be, of the forty-three, that would, that would be eighty-six. Am I correct? Okay. Eighty-seven, so it's seven.
That's with, that's with the proposed increase.
Yes, that's what I...
I'm sorry, Gary, can you explain what the professional fee is for wastewater?
I mean, it's not, it shouldn't be wastewater, it's stormwater. Stormwater. A lot of the infrastructure is oversized, failing, and we did a study, you guys all adopted the study that DLGF did, and we started knocking some of those out, some of those things that we identified as a study, and that's the professional fees that help do that.
Would you like engineer to read?
Yes.
And that's one of the situations, if you want to delay another year, you can delay.
The professional fees.
I think there should be a small amount here, but if the, we, I didn't check with DLGF, and we talked to them about if we wanted to just put a placeholder in there about what it should be, and that's the number that they gave us, so, that was really, no more than a placeholder. If it needs to be scratched, we can probably break it down to five hundred and ten thousand dollars.
That would quite change.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you like to tie ground, just look at it, water flow, or just something else?
Water flow, also, one of the things that we are looking at doing with the Gas Creek watershed project, is we're gonna lower the, the flood elevation by about three feet, that basically kind of get the water. The thing is, unless you go in and do a letter map revision with FEMA, and get that, actually get that map changed, everybody's still gonna pay flood insurance the way they were now, with the maps the way they are now. So that's one of the things that we're trying to get done, is to get the folks that are like, paying flood insurance, either lower their rates or eliminate completely, and some of its fees, and do that also.
Couldn't cut that in half, I'm sure.
Well, more than half, you said five thousand, down to five thousand.
If you want to wait.
But five thousand is very much...
I was gonna say, at least start out cutting half.
Is this something that the entire state is working on, or is it just Greensburg's working on?
It's, it's just us, because of the two ponds that we're putting in, and I, we change.
But I mean, would this be something that, it would be needed for the whole state in order to get flood tech changed?
The maps, the maps are already done.
I know.
And they just re-digitized the maps, there's new maps coming out, but they didn't change, they didn't review the hydrology, that's all. And we didn't submit the fee. Until you go through that whole process, and you have to do it with the new conditions in place, with the ponds in place, with pipeline in the river, you would have to submit all that hydrology information to FEMA, for them to review it, and then issue new maps.
Just for Greensburg?
Just for Greensburg, is it, what we're doing here? We got the new thing coming out with the flood.
It's tough to say, because they, Greensburg had its own set of maps in the old system, and the county had their set. The new maps are city and county combined.
But isn't this the flood plane of a federal, I mean, this, this hundred-year-old flood plane, this is, this is what you're talking about, isn't it?
It's the flood insurance rate maps that are prepared by FEMA. And what they say is gospel.
I know, I know, yes.
Unless you go through the process, and yet you change, by showing, you know, new hydrology, better topographic information, any of that. So we, we want to submit the hydrology that we're doing for the Gas Creek project, to use the lower flows in the model, and reduce...
It could reduce insurance policies to residents in that area.
It could either take your risk down, you might still be in the flood plain, but not as likely to flood, and therefore you might still pay flood insurance, but pay at a lesser rate, or you may be removed...
Yeah, because anytime you're in any flood area, you have to pay flood insurance.
Or you may be removed.
Unless you don't have a mortgage.
Completely. It depends what the contract actions on your property are, based on, because usually if you're within two feet of that hundred-year flood elevation, with the finished floor of your house, you're gonna pay flood insurance.
You're gonna pay, that's right.
Yeah, I agree with the contractor on that professional fee. So is this for the whole city of Greensburg?
No, not for years, this will be for the Gas Creek watershed, that's on the Gas Creek watershed.
So this would not cover all the residents of Greensburg?
No.
Cover a lot of them.
That's to say, but just that area? There are a lot of other areas, you'd be surprised at how many areas there's flood plain.
So I'm trying to figure out, we've never had that before, how did we pay it before?
We've never had it, we've never done it, it's never happened.
Never paid stormwater fees at all, or you never paid those kind of fees for that? Never put it in the budget? I understand that, but how did we pay for it before, if we ever had that?
You've never undertaken anything like this, by flood, you've just accepted what FEMA has, said, and it's gonna be one.
And if this can be done, it does lower the insurance rates for residents in different areas of that location. Now, Gary, how much does it take to do that, to get this done, for the Gas Creek? So if you...
If you want, if you wanna undertake that, put half of it down, and start the process, you know, in September, October, and budget, the other half for the next year, you could do that, because it won't have to be covered one year.
For ten thousand, how much can you...
If two million dollars that we're spending, to lower, you really don't have to modify the maps, but it would be the right thing to do. These professional fees are outside the scope of what you do then.
To get, to have the engineering company do this, to have FEMA agree to reduce the flood plane in that area, this is what it would take.
There'd be a lot of people who'd love to have their area reduced, and we're just hitting one.
Yeah, we're just hitting one.
And I'm trying to figure out...
Is that justified?
Yeah. Now, if you spend two million dollars in their area to make improvements to the flood plane, or regional detention bonds, and everything else like we're doing with Gas Creek, then you would always spend that money to reduce theirs too. But still, until we start knocking some of these other things out, and fixing some of the other problems around the city that were identified in DLGF's budget.
Are there grants or anything we can look for for that, or...
Well, that's the two million dollars that we got from FEMA, to do the...
These professional fees, is there any way we can go through? But that's our portion of it.
Gary, if we come out fifty thousand below what we're receiving, on two million, could we apply that grant towards the fifty thousand, get this done? We could, fifty thousand?
I mean, we're gonna have to bid the Gas Creek project by the end of next month.
And even though this is above, beyond the contract to install what we're gonna do, there was fifty thousand left.
No, we don't know what the contract is.
We don't know. But if it did come out under, could we use this fifty thousand as part of it?
It's FEMA money, I don't know, I would think that they would let you use it for modifying the maps, but I don't know that either.
If we're tying this in with the Lincoln Street project, wouldn't we be, couldn't we use tip of money to fund something like this?
You could use tip line, right? It would then, too.
Cover the whole area. For public improvement, and allow you to use professional charges.
I think you can make an argument, anyway.
I think you're right, Darrell, I think, I think what should we, should do, is like Darrell has said, the tip, like, I've suggested if the bid comes in under the two million, where we use this fifty thousand, but if both of those scenarios fell through, failed, we should put something in the budget so we can start this process. So if we're spending two million dollars to make the flooding better on Lincoln Street, we should at least follow through, so the people, one day, will be able to reduce their insurance rates, because of what we're doing on Lincoln Street.
No, I'm finding my, wait, the project, I gotta, I'm bidding out.
Oh, completing the, well, one of the interior projects. And you're really waiting until it's done, and you have notes, once the construction... And that's why, that's why I said, if you wait till, you know, the construction, that we haven't put anything out there, it's supposed to be complete by this date, but typically you're not doing a lot of first work after October.
And, and being honest, once again, all these figures were put down before we were told we had to cut the budget, especially for...
So, yeah, I understand that, and as we've not been told, if we had that much, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, right? Obviously, we're looking for the big numbers to cut.
And that's why I...
Like I said, if you start, if you start the process when it's done, you probably only spend about half of your fees from September to...
I guess, I don't, I don't see the problem, it's not gonna be done September, October, then wait another year, maybe, and better, maybe, position to do it. You know, if the project, we haven't bid it out yet, we know it's not gonna be done until next year, and most likely not until late next year. So you would be flipping two thousand, you know, two thousand and fifteen bucks.
Next year's, right.
Do you think it's gonna be pulled, right?
Yeah. I think that's a great idea, Gary.
What ramifications will it have? We're just one year behind.
We're not a year down, you're three months, is what I'm saying. It's not, it's not like, because you can't do this in January anyway, it's not gonna be done, project's not gonna be done on various, in September or October, so you're only three months behind, you're not a year behind this.
We will get to start till January of the following year, October oh thirteen.
The people just keep getting paid by the flood insurance, right, so... Nothing's gonna change.
Except the water, like before. The people don't know that.
You're talking for three months, and now, it's not like they're doing it for a year. We're just doing this project for nothing, I, I don't...
No, no, I'm not saying that, Jamie, I'm just saying you're gonna be part of it three months behind, but we're not budgeting it for next year, we're gonna be budgeted till oh thirteen.
Right. But you wouldn't even start this process till October.
Is that the case, Gary, we couldn't start this process until after Gas Creek is finished?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scratch it till next year.
So it's scratched till next year, that's... Anything else, Gary?
You don't have a cellphone right now?
Yeah.
Let me see.
I do. We could get, get the, my person. A Skype, yeah, so I didn't, I, I have a cellphone, I'm sorry.
So that might not even...
Comes out. What's the hip on maintenance?
Well, that'd be for the new vehicle.
Oh, for the new, you're talking about the new, if you get, if you get the new one, okay.
You got the fuel costs, the vehicle maintenance, and then the vehicles, so that's like twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty, which would equal the same fine unburdened number of... Mark, how you doing? Question for you real quick, sir. On your budget, you have a, you have a new pickup listed for twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the two thousand eleven budget, that you haven't, you haven't purchased. Are you planning on purchasing, purchasing that this year? So, so that would be separate vehicle, then, so it's not...
Well, we got a car sitting out back in there, could that be used for city engineers running around?
Well, you know, the utility department does use it, they, they base, that's why, one reason I don't use it, just one for the utilities. If they, if that's used by Gary, and it's gone, then they have to drive their own personal vehicles, and that's kind of a liability, for people to drive their own vehicles.
They were doing that prior to them being...
I don't, I don't, that's up with the race race accident, too. We should do a good drive truck, that's missing back from the post offices here.
How bad's the copier yet?
I, the copier I have is one donated by...
IBT, right?
I just know the repair, I'm just seeing how it went up two hundred dollars last year, is that because of problems this year, or just estimate, or just... So I mean, if we go back to a thousand maps, what's the issue?
Was that on three thirty-one, or three sixty-one?
Three sixty-one, yeah, the copier computer repair. I think they were needing sixteen thousand, I think.
Fifteen thousand for used, for years. And that was what's treated.
Oh, that's right, I knew it was the copier. What's the metal detector for?
Mark and I have been out looking around, and have suspicions, and looking at some of the storming places that we got, that there are a lot of very storm structures that haven't been maintained, and that would help us locate those.
That was summer intern, would be someone that's...
He's...
Oh, he's already cut that off, okay, I'm sorry.
I don't have a problem with that plot, early auto cat, because he's gonna move anyone by his job. The plot is already purchased, but that's, that's a little better, so...
Yeah, that's, yeah, so that's...
The auto cat has to make... The metal detector, that's one of...
I mean, the, the big expense with the auto cat is the initial purchase, if you buy their subscription, you get the newest software update this year. And that's cheaper than purchase, waiting a couple of years, and then purchasing underneath.
Hate to come back with a vehicle, but...
Twenty-seven thousand two fifty.
Yeah, I have a problem spending that much money, or a car, or a vehicle you're gonna drive around saying, because if you get a good, good use...
Yeah, that's fine.
I mean, you get something fifteen thousand...
That's what I'm thinking, twelve fifteen thousand.
Was the water department used theirs every day?
Yes, in the trucks.
No, that, no, I'm talking down, can you tell me something?
We use it when we go to the bank, and first office, and...
But just to the bank, and so forth?
Make a round.
Sounds like a, it's an expensive vehicle, it'll be sitting with insurance and so forth, just to make minor runs.
Other people use it, Donna?
They use it when they go to meetings, even the police department has used it, several It's usually the meeting vehicle, when anybody goes to meetings out of town.
Yeah, so they're only driving that, or meetings out of town, or...
Yes, utilities, it's not cities.
Utility took over the payment of it, or took away?
Two thousand and twelve.
But he pays half from the utilities, so half of his salary comes from utilities.
Mayor?
Yes?
Another way to help swallow that vehicle is like what we did with the fire department, where we financed it over X number of years, and we took, I can't remember what the total of vehicles were that we were asking for in the one year, spread it out over a five- or six-year period, and it was easier to swallow that way. If you decide to go new, then, you know, it would be maybe five thousand dollars a year, or something like that. Or, I, I don't know if they, if we could do the same thing with a, with a good used vehicle or not, where we would, I don't know if, if First Federal, whoever would finance that or not, but, I mean, that's one way of spreading it out over several years, where we don't have to take that hit all at one time.
Got a big red truck down there, you don't use all the time, don't you?
As long as it follows us when we need it, I guess that's fine.
It's the basic number, about a third of what we would be costing, well, no, because we can't take the gas and all that out, that, it might be about, it's, uh, we should call it twenty-five, basically, of what it would cost.
You want a pickup? Well, I was looking at a pickup, just in case something like the street department went down, a car, or a four-wheel drive vehicle.
Oh, you got things to carry around, too, don't you?
Well, I mean, something like an Explorer, you know, something like that.
The pickup truck's a lot more worse, though.
Which was why I priced out pickup trucks, because it doesn't have to be that, or have
Well, I think that's an option, that we want you to, for it to check into, and see what we can come up with. That, to me, is better than, because I don't see, I don't see this new vehicle, like the rest of it, I don't see purchasing that this year.
Well, maybe we just put a big question up on it, and see what else we have, and see what we have.
Okay. All right, any other questions for Gary?
Really, for putting the zoning, uh, apartment inspection, it would have fifteen hundred? Yeah. It's just a number of inspections that we're, we're seeing, we've taken pretty much the average of what we've been spending. See, we handled it in the last few months, and it has gone up, although we've been doing more inspections than the previous years, so the budget has gone up for that.
How much is he charging right now on that inspection?
Twenty-one hundred.
And didn't, have you included an increase in that here? In the inspections, because he, he had asked for it.
I just know he had asked for an increase in what he was receiving for inspection. But I know the number of inspections that he's, that how much he has increased.
Because you have the professional fees.
Oh, yeah. This, this one? Well, the mayor had asked us to look at, uh, putting together for going, combining our zoning ordinance, or assigned ordinance, and our comprehensive plan for coming up with unified development ordinance. The mayor and I, Kathy, sat down from several communities that have unified development ordinances, asked how the developers had adjusted to it, was, was it a better document than having all those separate areas to look at, instead of combining them all? They all said that it had, that the process had helped, developers thought it made things a lot clearer. So, the mayor asked us to look to go down that road. We're working on, currently working in-house on redoing our sign ordinance. But again, that's redoing the basic, like, all of...
So, combining those would be another sixty-three thousand?
Yeah, so, what are the special fees for it, if there's legal fees, or...
Well, there's, there's firms that specialize in putting these together, and they're very graphic intensive, I can show you one.
So, like engineering firms?
Engineering planning firms. And again, we, we did poll the communities that we talked to, and asked them how much they did themselves, how much they relied on, and put them together. And some of them paid eighty-two hundred, one thousand dollars, because firms do it. Time to cut that in half, looking that we would do along to our size.
And once it's done, Gary, utilizing it, this developers, engineering companies, get on your website and see what you got, instead of putting bits and pieces, trying to put a puzzle together.
And you're saying you, you figured about half of that, which would be forty thousand, an increase by seven thirty? There's still another twenty-three thousand increase.
Well, Kathy used to have and use Strand Engineering when anybody came in for an element to review stormwater, I do that now. So, really, this was only taking what we had talked to people about, what they spent developing a unified development ordinance, and totally subbing it out.
So you're saying eighty thousand is half of that, or eighty thousand was a total value, so is this subbed out? Is this subbed out more, or is this...
Subbed out.
It's not subbed out. So, you can't do any of this, at all?
We, about a hundred twenty thousand, hundred percent subbed out, was the prices that we got. So we're talking about doing a half to a third of the work, ourselves.
Okay, you do more than a third.
We don't have the capabilities, these are all graphics.
So if we weren't looking to doing that this line item, it would be a zero then, right?
We'd still have some for professional fees.
Okay, is that seventeen thousand from two thousand eleven?
Yeah.
That's what you... Well, no, but I mean, that was what you said, Kathy, you were strand, what did you do in that? So what would, what would we leave in there? If we were like us, the project, what would we leave in there?
Well, still need some professional fees for some...
Well, I'm assuming the seventeen thousand is...
But that's part of stuff that Gary does now.
It is, but I'm, I'm assuming that's what she, there she's been about that, is that not the case?
Well, I mean, we're gonna have some professional fees for property or acquiring from GCOM, but... I have a surveyor's degree, but I don't have the license to try to get it, but there's certain things that I know how to do, but can't do legally. Like I can write legal descriptions and describe property, but legally, I can't, that's practice of surveying, lands are made without license. So, I can still do it and have cer, you know, a surveyor review it, it costs less than having him give you everything, but you still have those fees.
But I think James' question, mine is too, what, how much was spent by some professional fees, is ballpark, is that seventeen thousand?
She was always...
About eight thousand.
About eight?
Oh, she only has, she only spent half of what she has in her budget.
That's her report. If you go to one oh one, whole, whole one oh.
So she has half of her budget left?
Yeah, it's July, so it's July, we got seventeen thousand there.
Yeah.
I, I guess I'm just looking at, you know, I agree, it'd definitely be a nice thing to have, nice thing to do, but I don't know... One point one million, I'm trying to figure out where we're gonna get it, so...
Yeah.
I don't know that it's a necessity, but it's, it's definitely would help develop, it would help things.
It was a placeholder, it's things that we want to get accomplished.
We're crying.
Yeah, it's a dream.
Doesn't have to be accomplished next year.
Okay, there you go, there's your answer, James, doesn't have to be accomplished next year, there's that.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is something we need to be looking at for the future.
And I'm just saying, we're gonna try one point one million, so if we add things, we're gonna have to kind of, so it's... We've gotta cut somewhere, and that's, the mayor asked us to look and plan to go down that route, and that's what we submitted.
Can you cut it to, can you do that? No.
So what we're saying is...
Can you cut it to zero? No.
Right, we're not asking that, I don't think.
If you wanna, if you wanna leave a level with last year, that would be more than a hundred.
And that would be, I think, seventeen thousand.
Seventeen thousand, okay. You know, I think so, but...
The line? I would take it out.
There's five thousand.
Yeah.
You pay for all her, you want...
Oh, so we don't have to have that in there at all?
No, that can be removed.
That whole thing can be removed.
The postage? The three, no, legal notice on three thirty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's zero for last year. That should be coming out of her, that should...
No, it, it comes out of the silly section.
So, all these years, she's never used anything in legal notices?
No. I don't, I don't have it there.
Copy machine, you not saw that, did you? We did.
She's leasing it. She's leasing.
Oh, it's, okay. I was just curious, because her copy machine says three thousand and nothing for two thousand dollars.
Legal notices, we took out.
Yeah, five thousand dollars.
Okay.
I mean, if she's wanting that to appear in her budget, that's fine, and that come out of where it's coming out now. Yeah, I think we either just, yeah. There's a hundred twenty-five thousand, a hundred seventy-five to go, where else is that? That's probably nice, if they're here, because it's one year. Anything else for Gary? Yeah, there was zero. Well, no, she obviously spent some on legal notice, a little bit was budgeted in her department last year, so that's five.
We don't have anything.
And suddenly, it's five thousand. Because the gene was paying that. So that, my question was, does she want to assume that in her budget, at least as a line item now? She did that fine, because it's...
Aside from this, and I'd say if you even has a... Okay, so we've just cut out that five thousand. Uh, legal notices? Okay.
How much longer we have on the lease with the copier?
Last year.
Last year?
You know, all rooms from last, last year.
Like three years, I think, I think it was three. They have the option to file it out.
She can answer that, I think.
She will hear.
What's the light meter?
The what?
Light meter, do you ever know it?
Well, with our new sign ordinance, illuminated signs.
At a certain distance, you gotta be able to measure it.
We wanna measure the intensity of the light coming off them. So we wanna be able to have a light here, to be able to do that, make sure that people are in compliance with the...
What about the assistant? What, what, um, nineteen, it's not fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand for the assistant? We talked about part-time, but...
We took, she was partially paid by, she took over her entire staff.
So she's going on with the utilities?
Right. With the utilities, she wasn't doing anything.
Anything for them. I think we're almost over the end of this.
Any more questions for Gary? Any more questions for Gary, for you? Thank you, Gary. I'd be okay with the council, I'd like to have Donna come up, just explain what's going on with utilities.
Yeah.
Yeah, she may be, that could just...
Wait a couple minutes. In more terms like this, you're better than...
Yeah, she may be asking. No.
So, does the mayor's department have twelve hundred dollars for a copier?
I won't spend it unless the one we have blows up, but it's on its last leg. It might be blown up by January, I'm not sure.
I'm just wondering, we can't go down to Kathy's office and make copies of that?
Yeah, I'm having, somewhere.
We will borrow somebody's.
Spending three thousand dollars on a copier.
It's like, like a vehicle for every, every person.
She says been here since she came and worked here with Gary Bayless.
Just a question, and I may, I don't mean to be rude, I mean, why can't we just go down to Kathy's office and make copies?
Sure, scratch it.
I just, I mean...
That takes her away from her office space. I don't need to get along with her.
Did you find her?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I know, it's bad, yes.
So, you want?
There's papers from all this kind of...
Oh, just what do you think about me, what do you think about me? Wait, wait, you'll come to seven thirty first?
Because I've already started.
Well, he was on the original.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Because I gave, uh, Chinese sailor a replacement, so he gave it to somebody else to... Are you done? Yes. HP.
HP.
Well, it's not, it's not, but it's HP, so, there she is.
Sorry, you guys gotta come up here too.
There's not enough space for us, we'll try, I can't move over.
Greatly high chair, right?
But we asked all you guys, I didn't know you guys...
That was the same call for one.
I thought you're Jeff now. Very well, very very, I said, you're... Oh, really? Yeah. I like, I always plan on doing that, because we have to.
You all have seen, you all have seen already some frustrated drivers, and we present that to you at the last meeting.
Never seen her.
No. That's actually...
Okay, so why don't we have Donna in there?
Yeah, this is, he's just wanting us to present something, and all, our budget here is a little different, we work on a calendar year, as everyone else does, but we do not really do a form one, so we, we, um, have our pass rates, and we have to kind of try to budget our capital purchases, and that's kind of fixed by all of our bond obligations and depreciation expenses that we have to keep put back for bond ordnance, and what I came up with, and you guys have already received this probably a month or two ago, and I also emailed everybody and invited you to the meeting that, um, Unlaw did the presentation on the May eleventh water and sewer financial analysis based on the twenty-ten financial statements. based on the twenty-ten financial statements. There, um, the state of Indiana was requiring an update because of all of the federal and state lines that we have with all the infrastructure that has taken place since two thousand and six. So I just have a cover sheet that contains those two reports.
Basically.
Has everybody gotten this previously, are you familiar with it at all, this cover sheet?
I asked them, I said they didn't receive it.
You're kidding me, I emailed everybody. Huh, well, there we go. Ready for half an hour?
But basically, what the utilities operate on are a three percent increase each year. They're fortunate compared to the municipalities, but we're going to have to cut things, the utilities can still increase.
Building into our rates is a three percent cost of living factor. And it might go up, it might go down, it's hard to say, but they do have that factor in there, so as far as raises, so we always know that up to three percent, that's part of, you know, the raises that can, that can happen. And that's what, if, if we pass the rates every year, as they recommend. And I can read this too, since you haven't seen it before, like, you guys chime in?
Well, I'm just saying, if they look at the numbers on the, on the original page on the front, that kind of tells you with our three percent that our analysis, Unball's analysis shows that is what we can spend in two thousand eleven, twelve, and thirteen for capital improvements.
Based on, yeah, the twenty-ten financials and their forecast and revenue and expenses.
How do we determine what capital improvements need to be replaced first, what needs to be done? And we have a system in place here to be able to say, this is where we're going from here for our two thousand twelve capital improvements, and this is what we want to get done, and that's where we're going to spend this money.
You have basically a comprehensive plan.
And the rates, rates themselves, it's all divided by the capital improvement.